We'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that you stand to salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you stand for a moment of silence for Sheila Burke, who is a former nurse in the school department, and also I'd ask that you remember at this time, because the anniversary is coming up this Saturday, of former police chief Thomas Lynch, who was killed in the line of duty in Abington on February 15th, 1942. He and at the time patrolman John Litchfield were in a cruiser up on Brockton Avenue across from what is now the Center of Abington Fire Station, and they were hit, they were chasing a speeder and a wrong way driver hit and hit the cruiser head on and killed the chief. And Litchfield was in the hospital for a number of months, and when he came out, the Board of Selectmen then appointed him the chief of police. So we would like to remember Sheila and Chief Lynch in your moment of silence today, please. Thank you. By way of introduction, by way of announcements, I should say, I have a couple. One, we'd like to thank Nate Elliott from Elliott Tree for donating his services to take poles down from the memorial field. The memorial field, as you know, is undergoing a lot of rehabilitation work, and Nate was good enough to donate his tree company to come in and take the poles down. Also, the annual town election is April 26, 2025. The deadline for filing nomination papers is March 10. We have, the town clerk has given me a listing of still, there are a number of vacancies and offices, or people that have yet to take out papers for sewer commissioner, school committee, water commissioner, water commissioner on expired term, sewer commissioner on expired term, board of health on expired term, and housing authority, there's a vacant position. So anybody that is interested, you could contact the town clerk and you file a nomination papers of 50 signatures of registered voters to get your name on the ballot. Also, tomorrow at Barton's Bakery, there's a public hearing at 6:00 PM on the grant for North Abington Center, if anybody's interested in attending that. Also, I had had a question about why we don't have public comment on the agenda. We actually do allow public comment, but in the past, we have, when the public comment was on the agenda, the selectmen at the time would just say, well, when the item comes up on the agenda, because you're only supposed to speak to the item on public comment of anything that was on the agenda. Town council has advised that we take the general premise of public comment off the agenda. We still allow people to speak on anything that is on the agenda at the appropriate time, and the reason for that is, as you can imagine, life in the United States has changed, and we have a number of groups out there who love to test us. And one in particular was, happened right here at town hall last Friday. We were having a meeting, we get up, and there were people going around with cameras, and they stuck a camera in my face and said, we're doing a compliance audit. And I said, well, hooray for you. I don't know what a compliance audit is, but, you know, best of luck and walk around. The idea was they wanted to try and provoke you. And unfortunately, if we have the general premise of public comment, people can come up and do hate speech, and they have groups around that do just that, is if they see it on the agenda, they'll come up and they'll spew anything, and legally, there's nothing you can do about it. So hence the reason we do allow people to speak, but it's the only items that are on the agenda. So just, I hope that clears up that issue. We also have the retiree luncheon that the Board of Selectmen is sponsoring on April 4th. This Friday is the deadline for people hopefully to respond. We have had a number of people respond that they're interested from that standpoint, so we welcome that and remind you. Is there anything else any member of the board would have?
I have one thing. I just want to wish my daughter Emerson a happy birthday. She's five today.
Oh, wow. Happy birthday to Emerson.
Happy birthday.
I know everyone's in shock looking at me, realizing I have a five-year-old. She is the most shocked, believe me.
Anything else? If not, the first, the first order of business, we have the department presentations we have with us, the police chief and the fire chief. The fire chief has been very gracious. He is the senior chief, and he's allowed the police chief to go ahead of him, because Chief Bonnie has the chat with the chief at 6:30, so.
Yes.
Chief Bonnie?
You brought me with Bill. The fact of the matter is, the fire department likes to stage, so the police can get there first, so we can make the scene safe. So we'll take care of things, chief. But thank you and happy birthday, Emerson. Thank you for having me in. Some of the things the police department has done this year, we're putting a huge focus on community outreach. When I interviewed with you all, and I believe at my swearing in, I promised the town that we were going to be out there and out in front, and people would have access to the chief and the deputy chief. We've made huge strides in doing that, but I do want to say, someone tried to give me credit for, you know, doing all of this. I came in to a place where the foundation and Chief Majewski set me up perfectly to lead this department into the future. And, you know, years and years and years ago, he coined the phrase "community partners", and I just think it's awesome, and we continue to do so. So over the past year, they've done things like Special Olympics, the cornhole tournament, which was right on our campus at the basketball courts, which was just an awesome event. We did a fundraiser, police and fire combined fundraiser for the Beaver Brook Playground. Obviously, the big humanitarian push that we made, sorry, for the hurricane victims in North Carolina was amazing. I've been a part of three of those in my career. That was by far the largest, you know, a truck and a half full of goods sent down, which was a huge, credit goes to the people in our community, because, you know, we just provided the space and people came forward and really pitched in. The senior senator, Amy Barrett, in her group inviting us down for all of these, you know, parties and so forth, it's just, it's so much fun. Our coffee at the COP next Thursday, we have one coming up. We served lunch to the high schoolers at the Abington High School, which was wild. I've never made so many sandwiches in a short period of time in my life. We just cranked out wraps. Somehow, I got stuck with wraps, but took it. That was an absolute blast. We had a toy drive that was huge, and Chief Glenn drove Santa through the town. Seeing kids and families run out and greet Santa Claus was unbelievable. Our retired guy luncheon was really well attended, and we put that out. I expected maybe four or five, and there were more than 20 people that responded to that, and I can't wait for the one coming up. And then, you know, tonight, we do have a chat with the chief. I'm not quite sure how that will go, but we'll see. Hopefully, people will come out to it. The Abington Police Department responded to nearly 20,000 calls for service last year, which is just an overwhelming amount. We have, right now, we have 11 total police officers, that includes an SRO. We have nine that can work the street. One's assigned to the schools, one is on light duty, so we have nine that can work the street. We have eight sergeants assigned to us, we have five available to us. One is deployed overseas. One was attacked after a domestic and has been injured for weeks. We do expect to have him back in a few weeks, hopefully. And then Detective Sergeant is not a patrol sergeant, so we have five working the streets. So to answer nearly 20,000 calls for services, it's just incredible. They had over 600 arrests, 800 incident reports, and what an incident report is, it's like a, could be a crime with no suspect that we can develop, or just like a property, you know, dispute, neighbors arguing over leaves after leaf pickup. I get pretty sensitive when my neighbor doesn't pick up leaves. Never call the police, but people do, believe me. Issued over 1,300 citations. It's important to note that that doesn't include like verbal warnings. Our officers have discretion whether to issue a verbal warning, a written citation, or money fine. So the written citations were over 1,300. We issued over 1,300 firearms permits this year, which is just a tremendous, tremendous amount of work. That doesn't include the licenses that we said no to, which require lengthy investigations. I get a lot of court documents with my name on it, where we get sued for, we haven't lost one yet. So far in 2025, we've had a very busy year, 63 incidents, 85 arrests, and 159 citations written. We're working on missing persons right now. Hopefully, we have that resolved quickly. In the last five months or so, since I've been on, we've taken four guns off the street. Two of them were fake. We didn't realize they were fake at the start. One of them, Sean Flannery, arrived to a call for a guy trying to hurt himself, didn't realize he had a gun, and opened the door to the car, saw the gun in his hand, and ripped it out of his hand. I mean, just unbelievable, like just unbelievable police work. Officer Sears did the same thing, a report of a road rage incident, man with a gun coming from Wamouth, wasn't even ours, but the address came back to an Abington resident. He pulled into the driveway just as the other guy did and disarmed him of his weapon. We've had four officers injured, the one where the sergeant was injured, we had another injury with that, and we had one injured in a motor vehicle crash, and another one attacked a few weeks ago at a shoplifting incident. We've had a number of missing persons. We solved all of those, the homicide. We had two fatal crashes last year, and four swatting calls. I can't give too many details about the swatting calls, but within the next week or so, I anticipate making a very positive announcement about an investigation for that, that will lead to criminal charges, and that has been solved by just unbelievable work by Officer Jimmy White. Our goals for the year is, we have a vote coming up in April. I hope we get out of civil service, because we have 36 applicants, as it stands right now, that want to be Abington police officers. And they are a pool of people, they have to fill out a resume to do it, very promising people that want to work in Abington, and I'm very, very excited about that. We just need the bodies. As many bodies as we get will fill. I'd like to have a detectives unit, a traffic unit. Like to increase our training. I'd like to establish some leadership training, and get our lieutenants to the SMIP class that I had been able to go to in the past. This year, we're going to have an awards night to highlight the work that our police officers have done. I think it's really important to do that, to bring the officers' families in and read the citations of the incredible work that they've done this year. And we'll share a meal together and talk about some of the incredible things that our officers have done. In the next coming weeks, we'll get some, two new drones in and a side-by-side ATV, all purchased with grant money. And today, we had two people start working with us, civilian dispatchers. They scored very high on our police exam as well, so the idea was to create a bit of a cadet program to funnel them into becoming police officers, so they are very promising for that. And we have one police officer starting the academy in March, and we have three police officers graduating the academy at the end of this month. That's it.
Wow. Could you speak to, I know at one point we had the clinician, is that still ongoing?
Yes, yes. We're actually trying to get more hours. It's not a matter of our clinician wanting to work more hours. She is a clinician in several other towns, and the demand for this right now is somewhat high, but most agencies don't have the funding to have a full-time, so you have to share clinicians. So she's been doing terrific follow-up work. I saw it in person with a person that was going through an episode right in front of our building. She just has an unbelievably calm way about her. The officers report that it works out well when she shows up to calls, so I would like to get more out of it than we're getting, but we're kind of at the mercy of another agency for that.
Right. Okay. So it's working well?
It is working well, yes.
Excellent. And the three police officers that are in the academy graduating, when they, obviously, they'll have to take road training when they get back, when do you anticipate them being road-ready and ready to go?
So it's interesting you say that. We just had a meeting last week. We're starting anew with basically building a sort of a new field training program from the ground up. Our officers have told me in meetings that they want to make sure that our field training program produces good quality candidates, so they will stay in field training until they're ready to go. It's usually about 12 weeks, but if we have to extend it, we'll extend it. If they cannot make it, we cannot keep them.
Okay. And lastly, for me anyway, and I'll open it up to the board, on burglar alarms, one of the things I've asked the town manager to look into with you is the response for burglar alarms. It seems to me that there are certain businesses in town that it's almost on a daily occurrence. You know, you can almost set your watch by at 3:00 AM, Wendy's, the burglar alarm for Wendy's goes off.
Yes.
And I think we should be looking at that in terms of, and I think there is going to be on the warrant, a bylaw to deal with that as far as response, because clearly, if these companies every day, you know, is affecting a response, and it's simply a problem with the alarm, then I guess the question becomes, if it's not something we can control through licensing, then certainly there should be a bylaw, or I think that we can consider a town meeting to charge them. You know, it's just incomprehensible that somebody would allow the alarm to go off like that on a daily basis. So with that said, does the board, any member of the board have any questions for the chief?
No.
No, I love their focus on the community policing and partnership and keeping that going. I think having, you know, that open conversation with the community, and I love seeing that the clinician is being helpful and that we're incorporating that, because some of these calls, you guys get called for everything, and it's something that you might not need to do, or you know, to have that help, so I love seeing that. So thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I do, I do want to stress, you know, we're publicizing our numbers. Abington's not going into a spiral. Like, there are some, there's been some concern about number of arrests and things like that. I bet you if I go back a few years, the arrests would be pretty consistent, but people want to know, and so we're producing the numbers in what we're doing. It's getting a positive response, so I think we'll continue to do that, and I appreciate it. I do want to say too, with the fire chief here, toward the end of the year, we did a combined training, you know, God forbid we ever needed it, but we did a combined training at Abington High School for the first time with the fire department for, you know, they have a response team that's ready to go in, trained to go into these sort of warm zones in a shooting, and the chief and I have promised our own people and each other that we're going to continue going forward with that training and build it up better and better as we go along. So this just, you know, 2024 was great, 2025 should be fantastic.
Excellent. Very good. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next up, Fire Chief Jack Glenn.
Boy, he's a tough act to follow. All seriousness, Chief Bonnie's a gem, so we love working together. Bring up the speed with the fire department. So currently, right now, we're at full capacity as far as staffing goes. We have four six-person shifts. We have administrative assistant, we have a fire prevention captain, and we have the deputy and myself. 2024 was the busiest year for us by far in the history of the department. A lot of people ask, you know, what is it? Can you put your finger on it? And then they said, it's difficult to say. There were a lot more medical calls, but there's a lot more of everything. I think since COVID shut things down, it changed a lot for people. I think we're seeing a lot of mental health crisis and calls for service. Starting back at the beginning, we were talking about a little bit last month, that 1996, we had our first paramedic started the department, you know, as the paramedic system. We now have every member of the department as a cross-trained paramedic. And for the people at home that don't understand it, it's double the bang for the buck for our citizens. So you have your fire department, you have your firefighters that are going to respond to pretty much anything that people don't know what to do, they're going to call the fire department, and that's where catch-all for that. But they're also going to get the highest-trained emergency medical technicians you're going to find, and I'm incredibly proud of our department because of the amount of experience we have mixed in with young blood. It's such a nice blend, and our groups are such a good blend that they offset each other, and you're seeing it in the results as far as some of the cardiac events we're responding to. We're having very good success with some resuscitations, and we hope it continues. We're setting the bar high for other communities in the South Shore, and that comes directly from our medical director at Brockton Hospital saying that. We've had multiple paramedics being asked to come in for our M&amp;M rounds or our continuing education rounds, basically to testify, just to kind of go over and say, this is what my thought process was with the treating this and this and this, to teach other people. And we've had a steady stream of our paramedics do that, and it's incredible pride for all of us in what they do. Our call volume last year, off the top of my head, 4,470 calls, I believe, which put us at about 600 or 700 more than the highest year we've ever had. Again, the increase in medical calls, that's a biggie. Some of the things, though, that are going to fly under the radar a little bit, but I am sure you can realize, is the fire prevention stuff. We have building going up everywhere since COVID. There are a lot of do-it-yourself projects, I guess I'll call them, where not necessarily the proper permitting. We show up on a medical call, and not only do we see no, you know, fire detectors, smoke detectors, we may not see walls, or we may have a situation where the board of health is getting involved. And our fire prevention department is overwhelmed, and that's Captain Cloddy, and he does a phenomenal job. He does a lot of plan review on some of these buildings, so we have got some big projects coming up. One of them will be 215 Central Street for the DPW and Fire Department, but he reviews all of that, and he goes through that, checks with me and the deputy on certain things that we do. We try to take the load off, he does all the inspections. It's been an awful lot, but we've got a terrific team as far as how we're moving forward with things, and it's exciting to see, because everybody in the department has their own little niche. We have someone that's on the critical incidents stress team, and we've had a number of calls in the last year in which we've had peer councils come in for our people just to make sure that they're taken care of. Mental health is a big issue these days, and it's only going to get worse, I think, because, one, there's no stigma attached to it. We're trying to get rid of that, that it's okay to not be okay sometimes, and some of the things we see. We're doing a lot of training with that. We did work with the police department recently. We got a private screening from the Hope Foundation of a PTSD 9/11 movie that's out there. They're going to be doing it for the public, they're doing it for families and police officers, but we got a private screening with it, and it just happens that that day was when the snow was going on, so it was pretty much the management from both departments, and it was great. And it was a great discussion on how can we move forward, how can we handle it, how can we help our people a little bit more, because they're our best resource. And those are the injuries that you can't see. Those are the ones that, you know, you're not breaking an arm, and it's cumulative. And I've seen it in 35 years. I know for myself what it's done, but I see people that have been on the job 12 years, and five years ago, they were indestructible, and now you're seeing the difference. So we're working hard on that. One of the other things we're dealing with as far as challenges go are lithium batteries and electric vehicles. We're seeing an awful lot more of car accidents involving that and fires, and even something as simple as like the town manager's laptop, the batteries in those. You get something like that that flares up, it could be a matter of seconds before it ignites something. So we've had to get specialized equipment to handle that, as far as gloves, packaging, blankets. The electric vehicles, the nozzle, they actually put in to charge it. They have one that you actually can plug in at an accident scene, and it cuts the power completely to the vehicle, makes it safe for everybody, and that's something that we had to do. So we're trying to look at opportunities to do that. We just qualified for a state grant in which we're replacing outdated, and some of them aren't working real well, four multi-gas meters, it's six gases, each one of them, going into a building, you can check the gas levels. We've replaced those with a grant completely. Two thermal imaging cameras, again, that they're older, we got that through a grant. So we're moving forward as far as that goes. One of the biggest goals going forward, what we're doing, is we're trying to kind of condense our training to things that we don't see as much of, but with newer employees coming in, newer guys coming in, we want to really have them get that opportunity. Myself, I've, you know, been doing it for 35 years, I've seen a lot of fires. Some of these guys coming in may not see a fire for a year or two, so what we've done is, we partnered with Fall River Training Tower, and now it's going to help with ISO ratings too. It's twice a year, we arrange a day with the guys that are off duty and get down, we take an engine down there, we run them through the courses. We actually go in there, light up a fire in there, you know, go for rescues, pulling mannequins down over the ladder, and we did that, it went over really well. But it was nice to build that continuity with some of the younger guys in the department, not to mention, they're going to do certain things on the tower truck that they may do in the next five to 10 years, but they're not going to do it at every call. They get a chance to do that and build their confidence, and that's going to keep us all safe. So going forward, I think that's the biggest thing for us, is keeping our people healthy. Again, getting out there in the community and doing some of the things, like working with Chief Bonnie and the police has been phenomenal, between the active shooter training we're doing and working with them on some of the mental health stuff. But you'll see our members out there everywhere. They're from filling the boot at Walmart for MDA, cooking with the senior citizens, there's just so many parts of the community they're involved with, and teaching in the schools. I could go on and on with, you know, the food pantry they were volunteering at. Very proud of our team, and we're doing everything we can to keep everybody healthy mentally and physically, because we want to keep this team together. As the state evolves, and they're doing some things with civil service and how it's going, it's a market out there, and we want to make sure we keep our, Abington marketable, is the best team in the area, and we want to keep the best people we have, and we want to attract the best people. So we're working hard on it, but, you know, that's kind of where we're at.
Could you, as far as the ambulance goes, can you speak to, if you have?
Absolutely.
Is the number of calls, it seems to me that it's not like one call after another. It seems like you're getting multiple calls at the same time, and how often? It's not an anomaly. It seems like it's becoming a regular occurrence.
It's consistent, Kevin. You're correct. So I went back and I did a little bit of research, and it's difficult to track completely 100%, but 2024, we did approximately, we had approximately 1,480 occasions during the year where we had two calls going on at once, or three, or four, or five. You can't pick a specific time or anything like that. We're relying on people to come in off duty. We're relying on mutual aid, like we give to them, but it's happening a lot. This morning, we had, I think, probably about 9:00, I think it was, we ended up with five calls at once, and it was medical calls, it was car accidents, it was a wire down, it was a smell of smoke. So yeah, we're seeing an increase in that. You can't put your finger on necessarily, because you can't, you can't time it. It just, it is what it is, and it's one of those things that sometimes we're lucky because it's a certain part of the day where people are available, coming off duty, sometimes where, you know, one person going here with a mutual aid ambulance, or myself or the deputy, the captain or whatever. But yeah, no, you're definitely seeing an increase in that, so when you're hearing those sirens going around town, we're not just driving around making noise, it's a lot going on at the same time.
So as far as, you had one firefighter just graduate from the academy, and as far as any openings coming up, are you pretty much, is it steps?
We, as of right now, I think the, unless something unusual happens, the next opening will probably be me when you guys throw me out the door in about five or six years. I think, I think our staff is set. Go ahead. Go ahead. I'm giving you your opportunity, Mr. Town Manager. I set the table for you on that one. No, I think we're good. I think we're, our staffing is good unless something changes, but again, now with some of the changes in civil service, you're going to, I think you're going to see people jumping in different areas to different departments. We want to make sure we maintain our people, because I'm biased, but we have an all-star team.
No, and I think, obviously, I said that when we did the contract, that we want to keep with what we have, so we have to be competitive, there's no question. Any questions from the board to the chief?
I think you're doing a terrific job.
Well, it's our, thank you, Suzanne, but it's our team. You know, we're only as good as each other, and that's really what it is. We rely on each other.
I appreciate the focusing on the mental health for the team. I have four uncles that were firefighters, and some of them still can't talk about certain things or, you know, get scared, so to see that focus now is huge, because that's going to help them continue on and help our community too.
It's changed so much over the years. You know, when I come on, I'm a third generation, but when I came on, it was, you know, we don't want that group hug, you know, and they got all that, and then it slowly.
I mean, I don't like hugs either, but I want to talk about that. It's okay to not be okay.
That's what they referred to, and then it slowly, you know, evolved to the point where I think this generation coming up, they understand, and they understand how it needs to be. needs to be and so we're working on that.
Very good. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go and see if there's any free donuts or anything.
Okay. The hour of six oh five, having come and gone, we have a continued hearing on the request for a transfer of class two license from ABC Tech Squad and a new used article in Pond Broke a license for Auto Avenue LLC, two oh one North Quincy Street. Mr. Beto, is it?
Yeah.
Beto. Thank you. Please come and take the mic. I know you, we had your application before at the last meeting. We had discussed in terms of the number of vehicles on the lot. You were going to come up and give us a map as to what, you're going to get the vehicles off the lot and then you're going to come in with a map to show us. I understood there were other businesses at that location and you were going to delineate on a map for us. So do you have that map?
I, I do have the, excuse me, try to pull it up. The, what was this? Plot plan? I do have that. It wasn't, I don't believe it's really definitive in defining the other businesses, but mine is definitely outlined.
Yeah. Did you, you didn't put the vehicles on the lot though? How many, how many vehicles do you have on the lot right now?
Fifteen.
What, I asked the building inspector to go out there today. What did he say?
I believe his number was twenty-five.
Yes. That is a mistake on my part. What I thought was that I was only allowed to have thirteen cars for sale. I did have some other cars that were being fixed or were getting plates that were just sitting there waiting for the RMV. So that was my mistake. I did not understand that fully. I did speak with him and call him about twenty minutes after the fact. He told me that it was too many and I said that was my mistake. I did move about, I'd say eleven of them, a good majority of them to my other spot and I have another location in Brockton. So I did move the cars currently. I do have fifteen. I know that for a fact. I took photos. I have camera feed if that helps. It was a mistake on my part, but I did correct it as soon as possible.
Okay. I thought we were pretty clear at the last meeting, but is there any questions from the board?
I think the license is about thirteen cars.
Yeah.
Yeah. When did you move the cars?
One hour after he came, so I'd say noonish.
Okay, but the last meeting, I get, here's my issue with it. At the last meeting, I had told you I went by there at three thirty. You said you moved the cars at four o'clock. That was two weeks ago. Now, the, the number of cars you were asking for is thirteen. He goes up there today, it's over that. It's, it's the yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, but. I, well, I'll throw it open to the board. Any other questions for him?
I, I think, you know, the fact that he has to delineate the lines, it sounds like this particular address, it needs to either be spray painted, so we're specific of where cars need to be where, whose or what's because that's what was happening two weeks ago. I think there just needs to be a better, better plan for that particular property with all of the different things, not just this one. Because this is, I mean, I have been on this board just a few months and this is the third or fourth time that it's been brought up that those aren't my cars, these are somebody else's, how are we supposed to know the difference? And it just seems it's easy to have extra cars there without it being a problem until we drive up on it.
Okay.
I know, I know it's a bigger thing than what this particular hearing is, but it seems to be a constant concern that seems to have been, yeah, an issue.
I'm going to make a motion. We deny the transfer.
Okay.
And I want to just say why. Two weeks ago, we met with you, we told you we needed a delineated plan, okay? And I'm the one that, I want you to get this, but I'm not going to sit on the board and have people come up, us express what we need and then go two weeks and not have it done. You should have, the cars should have been gone after the meeting two weeks ago. Our building commissioner went up today and you were twenty-five cars, you're supposed to be a thirteen. You don't have the plan we need. I want, I'm giving you the courtesy of explaining why. I'm making the denial motion, so.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of denying, kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Question comes now on the Pond Broke's license. I have an issue of licensing somebody, something on a lot that is a non-conformant. I really don't think we need to go forward with this, but it's to the pleasure of the board. What is your, any discussion on that?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I just want to say one thing before you act. Get everything straightened out and then just reapply.
Yeah, exactly.
We're not against you. We want you to do it, but things have to be done the way they need to be done for the town. It's not fear for everybody else that has licenses to do what they're supposed to and us to keep stringing along when you're not doing what we ask. So I just want to be upfront with you, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to deny the Pond Broke, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. When you're clearing it, clean it up, feel free to reapply.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, scheduled the perambulation of the town bounds by the board of selectmen in accordance with the provisions of chapter forty-two, section two. This is a kind of an ancient law, to be honest with you, and I think the last time the town boundaries were marked was thirty years ago.
When I did it.
When you did it, with John Snaga. It is the bounds in the town, they're granite structure and I went out and I looked at all, I found nine of them. Two of them that are on the Rockland-Abington line somehow get turned around. They say Rockland is in Abington and Abington is in Rockland, but so be it.
I didn't turn them around, Mr. Chairman.
It's, it had to be a contractor with a, with a front end loader because these are granite things that are in the back. The law requires us every five years to go around and mark them and it requires at least two selectmen. It's something that was always done in previous boards. It kind of went by the wayside. I'd like to reinstitute it. We've, I've been in contact with the Whitman and the Rockland boards of selectmen. We'll probably, we set the date for Saturday, April fifth at nine AM. I would suggest we start at Whitman, at the town boundary in Whitman on the Washington Street end where they can join us there. Then we'd probably go to the base because right in the middle of the old runway is where the towns of Weymouth, Rockland, Abington and the counties of Norfolk and Plymouth come together and it's in a manhole. We used to have to get an escort out there when it was a naval air station because it was on the runway.
Yes, we did.
So with that said, all five selectmen have indicated that they are willing to go out and do that. We'll begin Saturday, April fifth at nine AM and if anybody in the community wishes to join us, feel very free to do so. And we'll be out there and at least nine of the bounds, I think, there's one in the woods behind Walter and Rosella, Fitz's house up on Hancock Street somewhere.
Someone is definitely going to snap an ankle, twist a leg, I'm telling you.
And it's down near the, actually the Holbrook Rod and Gun Club, they're in the woods up in there too, so.
Usually the junior member has to go out to that one.
Make, make sure to shoot.
Only, only if you provide more vocab words like perambulation.
Okay. All righty. Very good. So we're going to do that. Next item on the agenda is the consider and vote possible sale of the town owned dwelling at twenty-two Bedford Street. This is, as some of you may or may not know, there is a house, when the town purchased the golf course back in nineteen eighty-six, there was a house that came with it. And since that point, the house has been, it's an, it's an old house. The town has had custody of the house. The town has rented it out to various and sundry tenants over the course of time. The problem I've always had with it is that the town, in my opinion, should not be landlords. You know, if the hot water heater goes, if the, we just spent, I think it was thirty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, of somewhere in that vicinity, I could be wrong on the amount, for repairs to the house. If the hot water heater goes, if the roof goes, anything that happens in your normal house, we're on the hook for. And as I indicated previously, when we were looking at, we have right now a one point one million dollar deficit. Next year is probably going to be worse. We've been looking at anything possible to close that gap, to come up with a plan because first thing people criticize as far as, have you looked at this? Have you done that? Why haven't you done it? Well, we've looked at all the tax title property. We've, we've had auctions on tax title and we're going to have additional auctions, as you can see, on property to try and gain money to come into the town coffers. And this is one issue that was brought up a while ago by, when we were discussing, actually, I think it was the warrant for the special town meeting because we had just approved money to repairs for the house, is should we really be in the real estate business and the liability that goes with it? And it's a prime piece of property on Route eighteen. Now, we had discussed it, or I had discussions with Steve Wakeland, who's chairman of the Strawberry Committee. We agreed in January to postpone this until tonight to give them the chance to talk about it, opine it, and we'll hear from them in a second as to where they stand on the issue. And then there was questions of affordability and so forth and so on. I think right now, the tenant that's there, we're getting, I believe it's eighteen hundred dollars a month on, which is far below market, quite frankly. But in any event, that's the history. With that said, Stephen, if you want to come up, then we can take it from there. Oh, and just before anybody understands, if we should vote, the vote tonight is to sell. If we do vote to sell, we cannot do it unless and until it's approved at town meetings. So there would have to be an article submitted in the warrant for consideration at town meetings. So it's kind of a two-step process, but Stephen.
Is it too late to submit articles?
No.
Oh. Steve Wakeland, forty-seven Buckboard Lane, chairman of Strawberry Valley. I've got a couple of members here with me that might like to say a few words too, but we, we've been a committee up there for forty years now. We've been taking care of this property for that time, collecting, actually the town hall collects the rent, but it goes into the enterprise fund for Strawberry Valley. So for Strawberry Valley, it's been an asset. It's like a thirteenth month of income for the course. And, you know, we've been able to use those monies to put back into the course. We had a meeting last month because you did postpone this, this discussion and we took a vote and the vote was four oh to not sell the property. Now, I want to delineate the property from the house. We're hundred percent okay with not being landlords. You know, we've had some issues up there, you know, we've, we've spent some money, but we've made a lot of money too over the years. But the landlord does to me make sense and, you know, we would be okay tearing the house down and leaving the property as part of the Strawberry Valley. I mean, the property is located between the sixth and the seventh hole right on eighteen. So we've talked over the years about using the property as a storage facility. Right now, we don't have really any storage up there other than the barn. We've talked about rearranging the sixth and seventh holes to improve the course, making the holes longer and also making it so the balls aren't going on the Route eighteen. And we've also talked about bigger plans, maybe a new clubhouse someday and that lot's not big enough for the clubhouse. But now, along with redesigning the course somewhat and the potential of getting some new property at the other side of the course being donated, you know, we're really excited about the property as a whole. So in eighty-seven, we did get the eighty-six, eighty-seven, about fifty acres and the feeling was that this house is part of that fifty acres and that it shouldn't be sold out. It would be, I don't think it would make sense. It would make sense next year when you got the proceeds, but for the next fifty years, you know, we'd have a tenant, we'd have, not even a tenant, we'd have a family sitting between the sixth and seventh hole that would just be a problem for whoever's running this course. The town runs the course now. You know, I do get calls from the tenant that balls are hitting the house and they're going in the yard. He's a tenant and he knew that when he moved in. But if we get a family in there, it'd be more of a concern for the course, for the town. And that's just, could be a little problem. You know, we get a, two or three calls a year from cars on Route eighteen getting hit, the houses across the street from Route eighteen getting hit and a couple of the other properties on the other side of the clubhouse, you know, the ball's going there yet. We need better golfers in Abington.
That's what it sounds like.
That's true.
Okay. So if we could go that route, we may not have a problem. But I'm asking the board not to vote to sell the house. I'd ask that we, if we don't want to be landlords, we tear the house down, okay? As far as the money, you know, are there other lots in town? You've mentioned, Kevin, in your opening, that you are selling some other pieces, you know. This is such a short-term fix to get rid of this lot and, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's a big piece because it's a small lot, but it's a piece of Strawberry Valley and has been for forty years. Sorry if you have any questions.
Any questions from the members of the board to Stephen?
You want to say? Yeah. Bo Ryan, he's also on.
Yeah, sure, Bo. Just for the people at home, Bo, just identify yourself if you can.
Bo Ryan, one one eight McKinley Drive and also a member, probably the most recent member of the Strawberry Valley Golf Committee. And that committee should be commended for the tremendous work they've done since that was taken over by the town. You know, a lot of things needed to be improved there, but specifically talking about the house, I've been the one most involved with repairs and stuff, so I don't remember a thirty thousand dollar number, a warrant or anything specifically for the house. I know we have done repairs, but it's all been within the Strawberry Golf Course budget of about five thousand a year, which normally isn't even used on the house. But I could be wrong, but I'm just not aware of it. Also, we have a plan for that property. So it's not like it's surplus property that there's nothing going on, there's no future thought that's going with it. You're going to see, there's going to be a warrant on the next town meeting for land that's going to be donated for us to help improve the course and that lot was part of our long-term plan to improve the course even further, especially those holes. Like Steve said, we got golf balls flying on Route eighteen and other places. So we're just asking that you let that be part of our long-range plan to improve the course where there's other long-range plans coming to improve the course even further and the possibility of there maybe even being an eighteen-hole course put out there versus the nine, which would, then once again, be very positive for the town.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bo. Any questions from the board? Anything further to be said on the matter?
I, just so, that was really helpful to hear, you know, that there's a plan for it. It's hard to say we have a place, yes, the town should not be landlords, but to say we've got this house that's been here forever and now we're going to tear it down and remove a piece of housing from the town when housing is such a concern. But at the same point, is it feasible? Is this something that we transfer to the housing authority? But it sounds like it's hard where it is and it sounds like it was like a caught on the edge of this contract as they, you know, sold it to the town. So I really struggle with that. I don't.
I wanted to say just one more thing because you just reminded me though. You know, the property was sold to the town, one point two million back in eighty-six, eighty-seven. In eighty-nine, we received a state grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand for the property. So we've always kind of thought that the property couldn't be sold because the grant was for the property. So I just ask before it does try to get sold, that someone does a little research to see if that grant would stop it from being, you know, being able to be sold.
Right. Because that's my other, is there, like we were discussing, you know, Arnold Park, we can't build because it's not, it's supposed to be for open space and not heavy recreation or you can't have structures. With this, what was the original selling? Is it something that a house always, it just has to be that house? Does it always have to have that house or is there something where if it deteriorates or? I'm just curious, like it, because I don't have like the actual agreement that's as have, like, the actual agreement that's as old as me.
No.
It's actually a couple of years younger, so, you know.
The grant was 750,000, he's correct, and it was awarded on the basis that it would be maintained for park and recreation purposes, a Durban itself-held grant. The idea of the grant was that it was for the public course, if you will. And the requirement of the grant was such that they could not just keep it to Abington people. It had to be opened it up to the public and jail.
I understand that for the golf course. I'm just saying this particular chunk.
Yeah. So the premise of the grant was for the, to assist in the purchase of the land for a golf course. I think it's a stretch, quite frankly, to say that the house was part of it, because the house, the purpose of the grant was for park and recreation purposes, which the golf course filled that requirement for. I understand what you're saying, though. So I guess the question becomes, whatever we decide, it still has to go to town meeting. And our vote, you know, we'd have to have this debate at town meeting as well, and convince the people one way or the other. So question comes on the motion.
I'm going to make a motion that we sell the property, put the warrant on town meeting, and town meeting decide. You guys have done a great job, but isn't that, we're selling. I'm the one who brought all this up. We're going to talk about Center School, which we've put out multiple times to bid, and we've got no bidders. So my problem is, if we ended up spending the 20 grand, or whatever the number was earlier, that's over a year's worth of rent. We have no mechanism to manage tenants in Abington. That's my first issue with it. So, and the bigger issue is, we need the money. We just sold Presidential Drive. We're not picking on the 22 Bedford Street. We're going through everything. We meet with the accountant, and the treasurer, we're clearing up tax title, because this year, we're in a deficit. Wait till next year, people. So that's the issue. So that's my motion.
My only comment on that, it's such a short-term fix. It's going to fix the budget for one year, and then we're going to have lost this property. And what's next year's budget, right? So, I mean, it's, it'd be such a shame to lose this piece of property for a one-year fix.
No, I respect your, I respect your position, but my position is, we're not landlords.
Well, tear the house down. I said, I don't want to be landlord either.
No, no, I hear what you're saying, but I don't want to tear down a $500,000 asset in this. So all I can do is sit here and vote, or bring up how I think, in my opinion, just like you are, and I respect your opinion. I'm one of those golfers that hits it out on Route 18. So my position on this is, that as a selectman, I want to make the motion that it goes to town meeting and decide there. That's all I'm saying. This isn't anything against golf. Listen, it goes back to the hockey rakes. I got accused of being against hockey. I played hockey longer than anybody. Street hockey, too. You know what I mean? I just think, from my position where I sit, I'm getting calls every day from elderly crying that they have to leave town because they can't afford the taxes. That's what's driving me to push all of this stuff that we have out the door to get the money into the town coffers, which would include the tax dollars on this house once it's sold, which would probably be, in my opinion, about $8,000 a year in taxes. So that's, I'm just explaining. I respect where you guys are coming from, but we have the mechanism of town meeting that has to approve it anyway, so.
I have a question if we do this.
But first of all, there's a motion, is there a second? Motion made, I'll second it. Question comes on the motion, Amanda?
If we do this motion about possible sale, and it goes to the warrant, and the town votes no, does the town now own this and maintain this for a year?
Well, it would be status quo, then.
Right. So that, so if people are concerned that the Strawberry Valley would not be able to expand, they're concerned about this house here, they are concerned about afford, like, there's so many different avenues where people might vote no. I'm concerned that if we bring this there, with that, we have now put ourselves even farther into it. I agree that I don't think it's a quick fix. I think, you know, considering the possibility of removing this, either having this property under Housing Trust, or we sell it and some of it goes to affordable housing in some capacity, but I think if that's dealing with the housing part, but I think keeping the house there and us not having this pass means we've put ourselves even deeper, and I don't like that particular development.
Well, that's democracy.
I know, I understand that, but I understand that, is there a way that we could set this now so that we don't have that potential for later?
No. The, well, we have to operate, obviously, within the law.
Yes. I'm not saying, like, go out and just do it right now, but.
Yeah. The law requires an order for the selectman to sell any property. We can do it, but we need authorization at town meeting. That's what we're doing. Now, we can go to town meeting, and they can make their case, and we can make our case, and the people can make the determination as to how they want to go. You know.
So what if we don't sell it?
It goes to, status quo, back to where it is now, and then if we want to, we can revisit it. But unfortunately, that's the way the system works. I know what you're saying.
Right. But is there a way that we can say, instead of a considerate vote on possible sale, it's a considerate vote on transfer of ownership at end of lease to Strawberry Valley, and they maintain that property? There's no longer a sale, it's town property, but it's no longer a home that we have to maintain or be a landlord for?
Well, no. You would, what you would do is, if you want to take what they're suggesting, is then the question would then become, subject to appropriation, we could then authorize it to be taken down. If, playing out what you're, what you're laying out on the table. If town meeting were to say no, the next question before the board, if we wanted to pursue it, would be if they were in favor, if their recommendation was to tear the house down, and we had funds to do that. I don't know what it would cost to tear a house down, but that would be something we could do administratively, providing there was funding forward. But at this stage of the game, I think we have an obligation, because, listen, when we're looking.
No, we can bring it to the town meeting, I just want to make, I'm thinking like six steps down.
Can I just finish what I got to say, please? What it is, is that, again, we get criticized for not having a plan. And this year, I've said in the beginning, we're going to walk into town meeting with a plan. There's going to be a plan for trash, there's going to be a plan for how we deal with the deficit, and this is part of the global plan that we have. Now, that's democracy. We can put our plan forward, and it's up to the people to decide if they want to approve it or not approve it. That's the way the system works. And the same way here. We can take a position, and it's up to the people. And if the people say no, then, you know, we entertain some other venue, or we let it go the way it goes. But I don't want to be in a position to somebody get up and say, we've got to lay off X amount of school people, we've got to lay off X amount of firefighters, what have you as selectmen done about it? Well, I want to be able to stand there and say, you know something? We've done everything feasibly possible that we can do, and we've unturned every rock that we can, and we've made recommendations. And if it, if it's the judgment of the people, they want to do it, that's fine. I go back to, just very briefly, and I won't belabor this point, I go back when I sat on this board before, we went to town meeting, and it was Park and Rec. I used to be on Park and Rec. And they were able to convince town meeting to give them more money than what Finance Committee and Selectmen had recommended. There was one selectman that got very upset with that, and they said, it's the people's money. They can spend it however they want to, and in the same fashion here. We can recommend, it's up to the people to make that determination. So.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to think, knowing that we want, what we're thinking we want, what we hope the people, like, I'm just trying to think down the road, if it goes in either direction, what are then the next steps from there? I'm thinking, like, you know, August.
Right. Well, that's what it would be.
Yeah, right.
Even if we wanted to sell it to senior housing or Affordable Trust, we'd still have to go to town meeting for a vote to do that, right?
Exactly.
Basically, we're just gonna, if we vote to approve the sale, it's going to go to town meeting.
And it gets discussed there.
We'll have the debate on town meeting.
And it comes back to us and decide how we want to, how we want to proceed with something.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I was understanding the whole process through.
Okay. Question comes on the motion. There's been motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of Mr. Wood's motion to sell the home and put an article on for town meeting consideration, kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye. Nay. Opposed, yes.
Okay. So is it four to one?
Four to one.
Four to one. Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Next item on the agenda, considerate vote on bylaw change for the annual town meeting warrant to adjust the quorum for the annual and special town meeting. The moderator is with us, if he could come up, if he doesn't mind. This is a question we've wrestled with for time in memoriam. We've had, and what's brought it to light clearly is, we had a special town meeting that we were unable to get the town, the quorum amount of 150 registered voters this past October, I think it was September or October, whatever it was.
December.
And I had asked the moderator if he could use his good graces in his office to, and I realize he's neutral on this subject, but I wanted to use him as a reference point to the Moderator's Association to come up with a listing of communities and what their quorum requirements are, which he's done and has been provided in your packet. You will see that the general premise, a lot of towns have zero quorum. A lot of towns have 50 or 100, a bulk of them have 100. There's only a few now with 150 where we're at. And if I could ask you to just kind of synopsize that, and then, the proposal I came up with for consideration of the board is to drop it to 100, based on the research you've done, but if you could further explain.
Sure. As Kevin just said, the Selectman Chair reached out to me and asked if I had any data about what's going on in local communities. And Mass Moderator's Association is a very active group, and this is, again, we're talking just towns with open town meetings. City of Brockton's a town, City Council, Waymouth City Council. Holbrook is a representative town meeting, where you actually elect representatives to go to the town meeting. So I think you have a copy of what I printed out from Mass Moderator's Association, and essentially, I looked at the, or I gave you the information for 15 surrounding towns, actually a bunch more than that, but if you look at just the geographical, one town has a quorum of 200, that's Hingham. It's actually 300 for the first night, and then 200 every continued session, that's Hingham. They're kind of out on their own. One town has a quorum of 150, that's Rockland. Five of the 15 around us have 100 is their quorum. Coacit, Halifax, Hanover, Hanson, and Kingston. One has a quorum of 50, that's Town of Whitman. And seven have a quorum of zero. East Bridgewater, Hall, Ducksbury, Marshfield, Norwell, Situate, West Bridgewater. So the current discussion of a quorum in Abington of 100 would be the same or greater than 13 of those 15 surrounding towns. So it's, as Kevin said, anywhere between 0 and 100 is what 13 of the 15 surrounding towns have. I work with the moderator from East Bridgewater, and they went to 0 a number of years ago. And I asked him how it worked, what's he like about it? And again, whatever you guys want to set is fine, I'm just trying to give you information. He said it was the best thing they ever did. One of the things about, in going to some of the Mass Moderator's meetings, setting the lower quorum becomes more efficient for town meeting, because you can start the meeting on time, which is one of the complaints we've had a lot from people who go to town meeting, especially those people who get there on time, and they sit there, and 7 o'clock comes, and I say, we don't have a quorum, can you call your friends? Can you, you know? In the old days, when we used to have it in the Froyo School, they literally used to pull the fire alarm and hope that people would show up and see if the school was burning, and then we'd ask them to check in. That was before my time, and that's illegal to do that, so we don't do that anymore. Hanson has 100. I mentioned, the Rockland is 150 for the first night, but then 50 for any subsequent night. Hingham, I mentioned 300, and then it goes down to 200. One of the things we're proud of is not having multi-night town meetings. There are some towns that meet for two or three or four nights, and I don't understand that. So.
We used to.
Yes, we did. And I think we've tried to become more efficient, and one of the things that's always bothered me in the last couple of years is, when we meet initially, and the selectman set the warrant, you guys determine what the articles are going to be. I just run the meeting. But one of the things that has, keeps coming up in the last few years is, is there anything interesting or controversial enough on the warrant that's going to bring people to get our 150? And that's a really bad way to run a business or a government, is to try to find something controversial to get people to come to the meeting. You just want to be as efficient as possible and effective as possible. So whether you set it at 100 or 0, I think it almost guarantees we'll start on time, because just with the number of committee members and board members, and the regulars who show up, you're guaranteed to have 75 people there 10 minutes before 7 o'clock. So whatever it is you guys elect to decide, I'm going to be the moderator, so I'll listen to pros and cons at the town meeting. But I wanted to give you this information, so you could see that 150 is kind of the aberration, 100 and lower is, seems to be more of the norm nowadays. And that doesn't mean that a small group of people are going to make a decision. That was another point that a lot of the people who went to 0 have made. Lowering the quorum not only allows them to start the meeting on time, but they have seen a noticeable increase in attendance, because there's some people who want to show up to make sure a small group doesn't make decisions, which actually helps with the number of people who are there. And frankly, the more people are there, the better the decision, in my part, and the better and healthier the debate. So that's the information I supplied to you. Can answer any questions, but it might be mostly anecdotal information, and whatever it is you guys want to put forth for town meeting, we'll talk about it at town meeting.
Okay. So the question is, what we're, what I'm proposing is to insert an article in the warrant to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by striking Section 152-4 quorum in its entirety and inserting in place thereof the following new Section 152-4 quorum. The quorum for any annual or special town meeting shall be 100. Registered voters of the town are taking any action relative thereto. What's the pleasure of the board?
I want to make a motion.
I make a motion.
I want to make a motion for it to be 0. Make one after me. I want to make a motion for it to be 0.
I make a motion to be 100. I know that a lot of my seniors go there, and it's a waste of their time to sit and wait for 100 or 150 people to be there. And it takes a lot for the seniors, especially, you know, April is, we could have any type of weather in April, and there's been times where the seniors are just like, we've just wasted an hour of our time, which is big for them.
Yeah.
You know, when you're up in the age. I don't know if I like 0.
I'm with you. I'm just, I'm stirring it.
That's okay.
But I think you're going to get a lot more people. Sean and I have had this discussion over the years. We can't get people to go on boards.
I know.
You know, I mean, I'm with, you know, I'm just saying, you want to, we want to push things forward, make it 0. Make it 0. Get people involved. We got a list here of open seats that no one applies for. Make it 0. You want to stir things up and get people out of their asses, off their asses, I mean? Make it 0, and they'll get to town meeting.
I will mention.
And you know what'll happen if they don't get to town meeting? The first time something goes through that they don't like, then you'll get 400 people a night.
Yeah, I will.
It's just my, just my position. I'm not, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying, we're having a problem with people participating. Make it 0.
What did we have for people at the last town meeting? I know that we couldn't.
90-something.
Yeah. It was well below, it was below 100.
We also had quite a few committee and board members that didn't attend that one either, like, because it was.
A single purpose, yeah.
The warrant didn't have a whole lot, so, like you were saying, those who are already participating hits the 100, or close to it, and those that bring. Like, I, it's sad that we even have to think about it, that people are unwilling to participate. But we also have to understand, people are working more, commuting is longer. Like, as you were talking about senior citizens, it's hard for me to say, hey, come out at 7:00 PM when it's bedtime, and you're coming back from hockey and having to sit there.
And then not have anything happen.
And then have not anything happen. So I get, I mean, I couldn't go to any until, you know, my son was three, four, or five years old, because bedtime, you know.
I've had discussions with parents. You brought up the point about senior citizens. There have been parents who have said, I'm not going to hire a babysitter if you can't tell me that the meeting's going to start at all, or if it's going to start at time. me that the meeting's going to start at all or if it's going to start at time." I understand that completely. So lowering the quorum is great. The benefit, just to share information, of going to 0, we don't have to spend time, usually you see me running out into the lobby trying to ask the five tellers, "How many you got? How many you got? How many you got?" And I got to wait till it's 100 or 150. If it's 0, I start at 7 o'clock. Whether there's 75, or 105, or 300 people, everyone knows we start, which then everyone shows up early, and they get on time because they want to be in their seats when we get started. So it's just more helpful. And this is not just an Abington problem. And I just want to have more people come to town meeting because it is, everyone describes a New England open town meeting as the purest form of democracy, and it really is. It's a place, it's a time for people to stand up and express their opinion. We have a very nice sense of decorum at Abington where people don't shout you down or throw, you know, have personal bombs. I don't allow it. People don't allow it. No, it's not allowed. And it's a great opportunity for people to come and get informed. And I am also impressed at how many people watch your selectmen's meeting, watch the finance committee meetings on cable TV, and they come to town meeting already well-informed about all of the articles. And you'll know that some articles, even though it's a big issue, there's not a lot of questions sometimes because they've done their homework, they've watched TV, the finance committee, selectmen debate things. So anything we can do to increase attendance, I would welcome. I do think, well, I'm not going to express my opinion, but it is possible that it would increase attendance if we lower the quorum, but I'll leave it to you to determine what to propose. Now, one other, I'm thinking procedurally now. If you proposed a warrant article of 100, and someone made a motion at town meeting to drop it to 0, I think I'd have to rule that out of order. But if you did the opposite, if you made a motion to make it 0 and someone wanted it to be higher, that would be within the scope. Okay? Just for your consideration as to what your strategy might be.
Well, the finance committee could come back and recommend a different, you know, a different number if it was 0. I see what you're saying.
Well, they, but the warrant article puts people on notice of what's being proposed.
It's going to be 0, you can go higher than that.
Exactly.
I agree.
If you say 100.
As long as they have the choice, there's a choice.
Yeah.
That's fine.
You couldn't, if we, if we noticed it at 100.
It has to be 100.
To drop down to 0, it can't go in below 100.
The theory being, people at home would say, "I'm okay with 100, so I'm not going to bother and go to the meeting."
Which is literally why we have to lower the quorum. So thank you, sir, for not coming. But yes.
Someone can't stand up and say, "Aha, I'm going to make it 0 while no one showed up." No. We're going, if you propose to make it 0, anything higher than that can be suggested, it might not pass. Maybe the 0 does pass, we don't know. We'll have to wait for town meeting to decide. But a lower quorum, across the board, everyone I've talked to, it's made it more efficient, more timely. Everyone that's gone to 0 has never reversed it. I think Ducksbury is 0.
Yeah, and they never had a problem filling the house.
Yeah.
Plus, everybody I see here tonight is always at town meeting.
We're almost there.
All right.
And it's not an knock on the people that don't.
Okay, I'll take back my motion.
We need to get people there.
So the question, Mr. Woods has made a motion for the article to be submitted to drop the quorum to 0. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Is there a way that we can say?
With the understanding that it can be amended along the process.
Yes. I like having that, so people are aware that we're not just going from 150 to 0. Hey, if you come, you get to actually say, "Are you comfortable with 0? Or maybe you want 50 or 100?"
Well, yeah.
I don't want to offer like that.
I think your article has to say a specific.
Correct.
Yes.
0.
Yeah.
But the ex.
I think, yeah, finance committee can make the proposal saying, hey, you know, if you want to go something somewhere between 150 and 0.
Exactly, that communication.
It's up to the body.
But it doesn't have to be in the actual warrant, but I just want to make it clear that we're not, we're opening this so that it is more to the people to make this decision.
Yes.
Okay.
Historically, there was a proposal to drop it to 75, I think, I want to say 10 years ago, maybe?
Yeah.
And it missed by literally less than 10 votes.
Yeah.
It was something people wanted to do. And again, I would like to get out of the business of trying to find something controversial to get people to town meeting. We should just get people there for the good of the community and take some educated votes.
Okay. Question covers on the motion. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. So you will change that to?
Thank you, moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator?
Town meeting's on April 7th, Monday night, 7 o'clock start.
7 o'clock start.
We need 150 people to start that meeting.
So a shop moderator will be able to explain what we're doing on that 0, or they can alter it?
You can do the explaining, and I'll correct you procedurally if there's a need. How's that?
All right.
Just like the rest of our lives.
Next item on the agenda, the minutes for January 27.
Motion to approve.
Motion, she has January 13th, but it's January 27. Okay, motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Report on the potential commercial development, Southfield, formerly the NAS South Waymouth. There was a meeting tomorrow, we had originally, as I reported, that the last meeting that Mr. Woods and I attended that went very well. There was a subsequent meeting that I'll ask him to opine on, but it sounds to me like everything seems to be on track, and I think absent this, tomorrow's meeting probably will just be the last, the wrap-up meeting.
Yeah, that would be.
For the selectmen, and then let the professionals go forward. But would you kindly give a report?
Yeah, last Friday, there was a meeting at the Joint Water Works with, there were 11 people in attendance. Obviously, Crystal Cameron, the superintendent, her assistant, Tom Royal, their engineers, Weston and Sampson and Olson, as well as a representative from Town of Rockland, the developer. It was a very productive, what I would call, professionals meeting with the engineers and getting in with the operational people at the water department. What they're trying to do is recognize some areas that can be fixed and things that can be done to increase capacity for us to be able to capture some of the potential commercial development over on the Abington-Rockland land at the base, which is very important for us to increase our tax base, which is, seems to be all I'm whining about these days. So, very productive. I suggested to the chairman when I updated him that we, as I guess we'd call it, the selectmen, the politicians, do not need to be involved after tomorrow. These professionals are really doing a great job. They seem to be making headway, so.
Excellent. Very good. Any questions? If not, next item on the agenda, status of the Center School RFP, Mr. Limbease.
So we did not get any results from the second attempt to bid that project out. We actually had received some interest early on, but again, nobody submitted. My recommendation would be, we did actually have interest for the two schools as a bundle, North and Center. And, you know, initially, the reason why we weren't bundling them together was because we're using North School as a staging site for the DPW, probably for the next year and a half, maybe. When talking to some of the larger developers who were interested in the project, they did indicate that that is, that timeframe's not actually a problem for them. They would anticipate by the time that, if they were awarded a project like this, it would be over a year and close to a year and a half before they would line up funding and permitting. They still have to go through the mass housing, and they have to go through our zoning board of appeals and all sorts of things like that. So my recommendation, there were two things also. I think that specifically with Center School, the way that we designed, or that I designed the RFP, it was very incentive-laden to have more affordable units. You know, the more that you added beyond the required 25%, the higher, the more advantageous we would seek that, feel that the proposal was. And I think that that's just, in this market right now, it's just not feasible for a developer to come in and do more than the minimum. They don't make any money off of the affordable units when they build them as it is, but then to say, you know, "We want you to build more of them," I just think that it was not, it was not an attractive project. So that being said, I would recommend we try one more time, or as many times as it takes, to sell these properties. But I think that we could try it again and bundle the properties, and after that, then maybe we.
Okay.
Look at something else.
Yeah, well, we've tried twice now. Let's, I would say, I would agree. Let's bundle it and try again. And it's not through lack of trying.
No.
So, okay.
Quick question. So we put both buildings out together, still be 25% affordable?
Yes, it'd still be 25%, be how they would permit it. I think that the, we would probably keep most of the restrictions that we put on over at Center as far as level of expansion, because I think that the level of expansion at North gives them some greater opportunities.
Right.
Okay.
You know, and then I think also, I think I can probably just, I asked for a lot of information in this RFP that I think we probably could scale it down to more of a conceptual plan to allow them to come in and speak with us and maybe not scare them away with high upfront costs.
Okay. Very good. All righty.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or?
No, I think he's, he can handle it. Okay, next item on the agenda, report on the status for the date of the surplus land auction that we had spoken about previously. I believe that's March 12th, is it?
That is correct.
Okay. Report on the status of the surplus vehicle auction.
So, as you know, there's a lot going on over at the DPW. They are scheduled Wednesday of this week for the auctioneer to actually finally come down and take pictures of the vehicles. Problem was, and I met with him, with the actual auctioneer, about a week and a half ago, to find out what was going on. And really, it was just being able to get in there and actually pull these vehicles out of where they're tucked into the corner to be able to get good photos of them and stuff like that. So I did confirm with John, though, that is scheduled for this Wednesday. The turnaround should be pretty quick.
Okay.
Do you know what time it's going to be? What time?
What time they're going to take pictures?
I'm just curious.
I don't.
Okay.
I can find out.
No.
Do you want to be in the pictures?
I do not want to be in the pictures, ever.
Okay. Status of, from the State Department of Revenue and the approval of Schedule A. I know we've filed Schedule A in free cash, and I'm just curious how we're doing.
Yep, Schedule A in the balance sheet, and everything is in. Andrew, our town accountant, has spoken with Martin at the state. He says it is on his list. We are pushing him to make it quick because we do want to know what our certification numbers are, but, you know, we're just at the mercy of.
Okay, so the balance sheet and Schedule A is in. How about the free cash certification, which is the next thing? Has free cash been?
It's in, we're waiting for Martin to certify.
So the treasurer has been able to at least input her information at the gateway, then?
Everything is in, other than.
Okay. And he'll have to approve Schedule A for us before we can move to this free cash, then? Okay.
Correct.
Next item on the agenda, vote to set the annual town meeting warrant and authorize the submission of the articles to the Finance Committee and Planning Board. Our list simply is, right now, is to set the warrant. That just means deadline for filing applications, excuse me, warrant articles was today. At 4, the selectmen now formally set the warrant. Legally, we're required to transmit the zoning changes to the planning board, and in that motion, we can also include the Finance Committee, even though in years past, it was just kind of an administrative role. But while we're doing it, we might as well do that. And then on March 24th, the selectmen will then take our position on each of the articles after the Finance Committee has made their recommendations. So question comes on setting the warrant inclusive of everything we talked about today with the golf course and the quorum.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Next item on the agenda, vote to place the debt exclusion question on the annual town election ballot for Vote Act. As you recall, we had a special election on January 25th for the social vocational school, which in the district passed overwhelmingly in all nine communities, pending of which it now requires the Town of Abington, as I had mentioned previously, and Superintendent Hickey was here, that if it were to pass, Abington would be required to put a question on the ballot for the annual town election to exclude the debt that will be required to approve the new vocational high school. So I implore the people, if you go down and vote on January 25th in the affirmative, that you plan to vote also in the affirmative on the debt exclusion, because there is no way on God's green earth that we'll be able to afford the debt schedule within the current town budget. So question comes on ballot question, which will read as follows. Shall the Town of Abington be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 or the half so-called, the amounts required to pay the Town of Abington's proportioned share of the cost for bonds issued by the South Shore Regional Vocational Technical School District in order to pay the cost for designing, constructing, originally equipping, and furnishing a new district high school and related athletic facilities, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Next item on the agenda, the town managers' report FY '26 budget process. Mr. Limbease.
So as we just discussed, we do have our Schedule A, which is a schedule of all of our revenues and expenditures. That has been sent over to the state for their final certification approval, after which we also expect to get our free cash number certified. We're still working with department heads in the school department to bring our budget to a balance point. We're all working hard to not have any staffing cuts and maintain the level services right now. Like last year, we're likely to end up proposing the use of some free cash to balance this budget. We're not quite sure what that number is yet, as the chairman said, we're still in a million-plus deficit. You know, it's not optimal for us to use the free cash, but unfortunately, the times that we're in really do call for that. We want to hold on to services as much as possible, and, you know, we have a healthy rainy day fund, which we want to make sure that we keep that intact. Certainly, it will make a big difference with these projects that we're bonding, as far as our bonding rate. And as we've discussed and said many times, the big drivers on this right now are our healthcare costs, our pension costs. State aid continues to lag far behind inflation and just general inflationary costs. And, you know, just, I guess, to put it out there, we're not, we're not alone on this. We're not an island. All the area towns surrounding us are facing these same difficult times, and they've had these discussions with the other town managers and administrators and other communities. And just a quick look around, there are many communities that are actually this year formulating plans for overrides, operational overrides. Hingham, Hanover, Whitman, Easton, Ducksbury, Halifax, Hanson, Kingston, Lakeville and Norwell, just in this immediate area, are all in that position. So we're trying hard, and you've heard a lot of the things that we've discussed tonight. There are reasons why we are making sure that we're not holding on to properties wherever we can, and that we're doing the best we can to have a long, you know, a long-term plan to avoid that. But that's where we're at.
And I think too, also on the trash issue, we want to just mention, we had discussed the last several meetings, is that there'll be an article on the warrant to establish an enterprise fund for trash. We proposed this year to fund it in its entirety from free cash and have a four-year process of weaning trash out of the budget. It's gone up $500,000 over 56% in the last six years, I believe. And it's unsustainable cost, there's just no way can we do it when local aid has only increased, I think this year was 2.1%.
1.9%.
Is it down further? So, I mean, again, I go back to the plan. The plan is that we, to wean ourselves off of it and take into consideration the overrides that had been enacted in previous years, many years, 17 years ago, and then 17 years prior to that. So we want to take that into consideration and have a four-year plan to wean ourselves So we want to take that into consideration and have a four-year plan to wean ourselves off of the trash and into a user fee, but next year would be fully funded out of free cash. Secondly, we were going to have a seminar, we set originally the 19th, I think we've changed that to the 26th of March, at the Senior Center, beginning at 6:00 PM, to, again, do a seminar for all people to explain that whole process, so we're mindful of that. And we've asked the legislators to come in, I think they'll probably be the last meeting in March, based on their schedule, to, again, try and lobby for more local aid and get a better handle by that point of where does the state stand based on their revenues? The last revenue report I looked at, it looked like last month's year-end was actually better than they had forecasted. So maybe there's some silver lining, I don't know, I don't want to get too hopeful, but at least we'll have a better idea, you know, by the time the legislators come in. Any other questions for the town manager? If not, we will enter into executive session, but we will reconvene. Again, briefly, we're trying to knock off the labor contracts, which we've settled with fire police, what kind of consider the clerical employees. So pursuant to provisions of S. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21-3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining to wit the Abington clerical employees, public employees, local union, 1139, is there a motion?
Motion to go to executive session to reconvene.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call, Amanda.
Yes.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and yes. We will reconvene.
Never going to get that right.